I understand one minute late here.
Yeah, right.
Navy time clock right here. So I am Bill Canada, Custer County Chairman of the Board of Commissioners. This is Monday, November, December the eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is now nine thirty-one. And I'll call this meeting to order. Please sign your phones. I've gotten mine done this time. And this meeting will be recorded on Zoom and the clerk is going on YouTube. And I'll talk about rules of the road here in a minute. So let's please stand for the pledge, Lucas.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for the invocation. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for all our blessings. And we ask that you please bless this meeting, the Custer County Board of Commissioners, especially at this time, Thanksgiving, as well as the recognition of the fact that Pearl Harbor Day was yesterday, and we want to acknowledge the sacrifices that our citizens have made and our military has made as well. Thank them with wisdom, patience, and kindness. So we saw the perplexities and the problems and choices as we discuss zoning and regulations and rules that have been updated today. We ask that you bless this meeting and our citizens and grant us the grace to ask what you would have us to do in the spirit of wisdom to save us from all false choices. We ask this as with board convenions to and for the service of our Custer County citizens. In Christ's name I pray, amen. Okay, thank you, Lucas. Okay, roll call, please. Kelly.
Commissioner Canada.
Here.
Commissioner F.
Present.
Commissioner Vogelson.
Here.
County Attorney Dan Slater.
Here.
E O C C Admin Caitlin Womack.
Here.
And Court to the Board Kelly Camper.
Thank you, Kelly. Audience introduction, let's start over here.
Skip Ross Roberts, my chair of the board.
Skip, nice to see you. Next.
I am Cheyenne Shaw.
Thanks.
Delaina Crawford, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Keith, the Chairman, Planning Commission.
Mary, Secretary.
Glad to see you all here back. Any online?
Jeff on Westwood Web Design.
Okay, good. Okay, takes care of that. Agenda shouldn't be modified any of that I'm aware of.
Yes, we need to add public hearing, the first item under new business.
First item is public hearing.
Yeah, we need to open it up. And then do these other two items during the public hearing. But we need to.
After the public hearing is closed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, yeah, it makes sense. That's what we're gonna do. Okay, we're straightening out our process. We're growing. Okay, we got that amendment to the agenda. Anything else on? And there shouldn't be any unfinished business unless you got another regulation to throw at us. Out of cycling. Okay, with that, I want to point out that this is a public hearing. And it's not a debate. We're not here to debate one second, Jim. I just wanted to make sure that we understand that we will be reviewing these regulations. We haven't had any formal meetings where we've gathered data in the past. We've gotten lots of information. But zoning has done a good job of taking the thoughts to the Board Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is made up of people, citizens of the county of all walks, with their thoughts of what's best for the Custer County as we grow and as we meet our strategic goals. So with that, you can certainly ask a question or speak for or against a resolution. But I don't want to debate it. We just will hear your questions. And then we will talk amongst ourselves here and discuss what we've got to do and decide whether what's recommended is right or wrong, and we'll proceed that way. Okay, so additionally, is there anything that you would like to add, Dan?
No, just that we are opening the public hearing at nine thirty-six A.M.
Okay, I was gonna get into that.
Sorry.
Back to the rules.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Okay, so that's where we are now?
Yes.
And public hearing, so that's the first item which Dan announced is that we begin at nine thirty-six. Okay, Jim, one quick one.
Just have a point of order. This is the first I've heard that this is a public hearing?
It was published in the Wet Mountain Tribune. So we published notice of a public hearing.
Okay, but the website never noticed, and the agenda never noticed.
There's been proper notice of the public hearing. Even though it was left off of the agenda, it's still been properly noticed separately from the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe.
We had to do that. We actually delayed it, just like you said before because of that. Okay, with that, then we got zoning resolution amendments.
Just to make sure there's no other public hearing.
Okay.
So you need to close the public hearing at this point.
Okay, we will close the public hearing at this point as we go over these regulations. Thanks, Dan. Okay, the resolution amendments now, we want to go forward with that. Do we want to have Delaina talk through them, bring them to the board? Or are we gonna step just ourselves through them? What would you prefer? I think we can just start with the beginning. Okay, you want to start with me?
This is what you want me to read? Or are you gonna go through the proposed changes?
He's got a voice problem today.
Do we want Delaina to go through the proposed changes?
Let's let Delaina, somebody's gotta go through the proposed changes with us, Jim.
And there's a lot of them, so do we want to go through or?
I think it should be the secretary.
Everybody is nodding everybody else.
There's some, we don't need to listen to the changes that are only, let's say, punctuation and those kinds of things that change. I want to hit the actual resolution change or update of a specific item. So Mary, can you?
I'd be happy to.
To pull out this and never take it away.
All right, so I'm gonna skip the stuff that doesn't affect.
That's right.
The intent.
Yeah.
All right, the first thing that I think is applicable is there was a footnote under the summary of the zoning resolution, page thirteen, and it just said, as used in zoning, and we changed it to as defined in the zoning resolution. So just a little more specific there.
Page thirteen.
And then page twenty-two, I think, is if we talk about bedroom.
Before you get into that real quick. What she's skipping are simple things. This is a resolution that was updated from the March, November. They've changed the dates and all that to make it relevant. So those punctuation kinds of things are what she's not reading. Go ahead.
Additionally, what I'm not reading is Cheyenne went through the CRS and made sure that the exact references are made and those are formatted correctly. And I'm gonna skip those as well, except for a couple of them that we actually pulled away from the CRS a little bit.
Right.
So we'll look to those.
So it, for example, airport hazard, it says PERC CRS, Chapter forty-one, thirty, dash three, one oh three, Perrin three, so we're not gonna go through that. But those are all updated correctly. Thank you.
She spent a lot of good time on that. So this is under definitions of a bedroom. And there was quite a bit on there, and it's been recommended to change it to any room that's intended for sleeping.
Pretty straightforward. And by, just for reference, it eliminated several, like five definitions that were irrelevant.
Do you want me to read those?
No.
Okay. The second one is definition of breezeway. We're adding between structures so that it reads a roofed outdoor passage between structures. Carrying on with definitions, in the back of the document, there was an appendix that had.
Acronyms.
Thank you, that's the word, acronyms. And there were both acronyms there and in the definition. And people didn't understand to go to the back of the document to look at the appendix for those acronyms. So we eliminated the appendix and included the acronyms where they were missing in the definitions. So we'll be reading a bunch of those. They're not, they're not changes, but they're just moving those to the definitions point. For instance, CDOT, Colorado Department of Transportation. CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment.
And this is all alphabetical, just for people's information on the introduction.
With the, the next one is the cease and desist order definition. There was some duplication and errors in duplication between that and section twelve point six. So in order to alleviate that in the future, we just said to go C twelve point six.
Page which?
I'm sorry?
Define the page that that was on, or just state it.
You want to know what page twelve point six is?
Yep, that's on, tell them, for the record, which page is that?
Oh, page twenty-three?
Yeah.
Continuing on page twenty-three, just adding CBW, Colorado Parks and Environment. And the next one is page twenty-six, just adding HB as House Bill. Clarifying that the Homeowners Association is also acronymed as HOA. Page twenty-seven is just a typographical error. Page twenty-eight, adding OWTS, On-Site Waste Water Treatment System. At the bottom of twenty-eight, as discussed, just clarifying the CRS reference. Page twenty-nine, again, is just a clarification of the CRS reference. Page thirty is just a typographical error under recreational occupancy. Page thirty-two, we're removing the UBC reference. It is not in the resolution as of anywhere, and it's also irrelevant. It's been changed to International Building Code, which is also not referenced. Adding some more acronyms, USCNG, United States Coast and Geodetic. USGS, United States Geological Survey. We did add VALT as the definition of waste holding tank to C-section six point one sanitation requirements. Adding the acronym WRIS, Wildlife Resource Information System. Page thirty-five, yes. Oh, thank you. This was, I didn't get this in my notes, but on page thirty-three, we talk about the quorum for the planning commission. It was stated as four, and according to Keith, it was four because the chairman wasn't voting unless there was a topic. Now we do the chairman vote all the time, so having four doesn't make sense because you do have a tie. So we're changing that to five. Thank you. Page thirty-five, again, is a reference to CRS and then spelling out the County Planning Commission instead of PC. Page thirty-six.
Hold on a second. So if you're gonna do it there, number five has PC in it, and so does two and three. Hit it first, and then you can just do the acronym technically.
Well, the problem is, is it's, we are referencing the CRS, which spells it out. And so we are doing exactly what the CRS indicates. Is that okay?
So that's a quote from the CRS as opposed to the other part of it?
No, I think that's a good idea.
Just trying to keep it very, very clear.
Okay.
It's the same thing on thirty-six, they spell out the County Planning Commission. All right, page thirty-nine. This is where we were looking to take out the CRS reference because if you look at the note on the right, the CRS States Planning Commission instead of BCA, and we wanted to include that. So we're taking out the reference and including the BCA's. We're not changing our verbiage at all. Page forty-two. H one appeals from the decision of the Planning and Zoning Office and BOCC must be submitted to the Planning and Zoning Office. We are suggesting to take out NBOCC as the decisions of the BOCC should not be appealed in our commission. So as much as that's a big change, it's very simple in our verbiage. Page fifty-three, sanitation requirements. Page forty-three.
Forty-three.
Associate members, four point four.
Four point four associate members, that are young.
I don't have to change that. Okay. Associate members. Oh, again, this is taking out the CRS reference because they do not require associate members to be full-time residents, and we are recommending that we do require them to be full-time residents. Thank you. Obviously, I don't have the latest and greatest in front of me, so I apologize.
So the CRS just defines what an associate member is, then?
Okay, I'll take you.
Smart move.
All right. We're still on page fifty-three, the sanitation requirements. First one is, since we defined the acronym OWTS, we just took out the verbiage. I thought we were gonna do that. No, we were gonna do that. We decided to have it both places. So do you want me to mark up your copy?
Yeah, because that's not in our copy that way.
Yes, it's stated again with OWTS.
We wanted to restate it again. Is that all right?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're working from the same copy. You're working from.
Well, the one that she just gave me, it's crossed out.
Yeah, so let's not use.
We don't have, we don't have.
Let's use the one that isn't crossed out because that's the one they're looking at. The one that, you're looking, the one that is crossed out is apparently a different version than what.
Okay, I have one of yours. You follow them through because obviously you've got some that I don't.
Okay, hold on there. Then Dan, what, then if they want to make that change?
No, we're not, we're not.
You'd rather just leave it in, like it is, but we see? Okay, I'm good with that.
All right, there were some, let's see, under VALT, we took out the word septic system, so the VALT systems must have an approved variance from the BOCC acting as the Custer County Board of Health. And then removing shall be pumped at least annually with receipts provided to the Planning and Zoning Office. You guys good with that?
I don't know that you need to speck it like that. I think it's just the Board of Health does it. Because we know who the Board, the Board of Health is officially what it is.
Well, the reason why we have to put that for the state On-Site Waste Water Treatment because you guys are not, most septic system stuff is through the Board of Health.
Right.
You guys are the Board of Health, but you're acting, the commissioners are acting as the Board of Health.
No, we are the Board of Health.
That's just how it says.
I don't know why, I, I agree that that seems superfluous to have the BOCC acting as the County Board of Health. Because the County Board of Health is the County Board of Health.
That's right.
That's just what it says in the state health regulations, so that's why.
Well, it says Board of Health in the state regulations.
And if at some point the county commissioners wanted to have an independent Board of Health.
It's still a Board of Health.
We shouldn't have to change the zoning resolution. That was required as a change in the zoning resolution.
Right.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is do not add BOCC acting as.
Right, we are, the Board of Health is in charge of making that call.
We remove the paragraph, recreational vehicle parks and tent camping areas shall provide an authorized dump station for disposal of chemically-treated sewage. Such stations shall meet or exceed the minimums standard required by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment.
Didn't need to be there.
We, we're not doing that.
That's right.
So we have to take it out since we're not doing it. No disposal of waste water, black or gray, that's just grammar. Then we added biosolids from municipal systems or sludge from septic tanks or vaults is permitted onto or into the ground creeks, streams, or bodies of water. Land application at a county and state-approved landfill is only permissible when permitted by Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, CDPHE. In case we ever get there. All right, page fifty-four, under structure standards, we wanted to add, all structures must comply with applicable state regulations. Page fifty-five, it's just staying with the same note pleasure of putting twelve in front of, between twelve and twelve. Page fifty-seven, we would not be allowing, instead of, under illuminated signs.
Wait a minute, back up to six point five.
All right, I'll have that one.
There you go, my bad. It's kind of hidden.
On fifty-six, or in section six point five, you took out without a permit and indicated that, and you took out where it said all oversized signs must have an approved variance.
No, we didn't print it. So yes, would you like to read that again for me?
On section six point five, you took out the phrase without a permit in terms of signs and took out the phrase, all oversized signs must have an approved variance. So essentially, you wouldn't give the option to allow for oversized signs with a permit.
Right.
Correct. Everybody's good. All right, then we go down to illuminated signs. Again, I think that's just a grammar. Shall not be permitted is changed to are not allowed. Penalties, since there is no permit for that, we just took out that they, or which have not been properly permitted, since they can't have a permit now.
Right.
Yes?
I guess I have a question about that, which I didn't realize until you said that out loud. Presumably, we currently have certain oversized signs that have permits.
Are we grandfathering them?
I, I would assume that they are grandfathered in, in which case G still probably needs to have that language.
That makes sense. You guys agree with taking that out then, just leaving it, leaving it in?
Leaving it.
All right. Thank you for that.
That just covers the grandfather clause.
Do we need to state that to cover grandfathered signs?
I don't think so.
Page fifty-eight. Lots of changes to green burial, a lot of additions. First bullet point, obtain a disposition permit from the county clerk prior to burial. Fill out private burial permit.
Just a quick question. Green burial, everybody understand that in the public? Was that defined anywhere?
It is defined under definitions.
It is in the definition, that's all I'm asking.
You want me to read that?
No.
Okay.
If it's there, it's there.
Fill out a private burial permit. The coroner, sheriff, or two witnesses and the landowner must sign verifying GPS coordinates. Record a private burial affidavit and death certificate with the county clerk within thirty days of death. Give a copy of the private burial permit and affidavit to the county coroner, county assessor, and Planning and Zoning Office. Then we are removing that the death certificate needs to be filed with the Custer County Clerk. Adding or refrigerated, where it says burial must be within twenty-four hours after death if the body is not embalmed or refrigerated. Removing, body must be refrigerated within twenty-four hours after death, death if the body is not embalmed. Removing, a private burial affidavit must be obtained and filed with the Custer County Coroner's Office. A copy of the affidavit must be filed with the assessor and zoning offices.
Up where it talks about recording affidavit with me, does it have the death certificate there also?
Record a private burial affidavit and death certificate.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who's putting together the GPS coordinates?
Usually Brad does that.
Page sixty-two. A lot of times, you would only look at closing and open permit or compliance inspection, that section. But there's actually a full appendix about what is required. So we went ahead and added the reference to that, so you would know to go and look. So we added, see Appendix D, Compliance Inspection for requirements and procedures prior to occupancy and permit closure. Page sixty-five.
So Appendix D explains it in detail, then?
In detail. But you didn't know to go and look for it?
Yeah.
Does your page sixty-five have it all written out? If it doesn't, you don't have sixty-five? Okay, this is special use permits.
It's called the application procedure for special use permits.
We wanted to add that the property does not reside on a non-maintained road, but then we discussed it. And we would like to put must provide an agreed-upon plan for the maintenance of any portion of their access not publicly maintained by the county or state.
It's not in my, that's not in our.
So what I think happened was the copy that I was given on the resolution is different than what is in the shared folder now, and what is different than what you're reading.
Okay.
Because that is not in either one of these copies.
So what we have is written road maintenance agreements between all affected parties is the property, if the property is located on a non-state or county-maintained road.
Are you happy with that verbiage?
I am.
So what did you read again?
Must provide an agreed-upon plan for maintenance of any portion of their access not maintained by the county or state. It's the same thing, just different. I like that, I like what you've got.
Okay.
Can you make sure I get that?
It's easier is what we've got.
I agree with that too, except that I don't have.
We don't want to go through another meeting, except in.
But the problem is, we, they have it, and they're the ones that are adopting it. And so they need to have what they're adopting or not adopting in front of them.
No, I think that was a good, a good add.
I like the way it's rewritten.
That's great.
I agree.
Okay. Short-term rental permits.
Page seventy-six.
Page seventy-six, nine, ten, one, C. This is, again, just making sure that the verbiage is the same as the section that it's referring to. So the licensing or regulation under the authority conferred in subsection, blah, blah, blah. Next thing you have is on seventy-seven? Uh, mine just says the new, the new verbiage. So I will, I assume it's the same as what you read earlier.
I'll read it. The property must have, that's number two. The property must have been owned by the applicant for at least two years.
Yeah, let's do that one first. Everybody good with that? It is actually the same as silverware.
Right. Number three.
Yes.
Must include written road maintenance agreements between all affected parties if the property is located on a non-state or county-maintained road. Go through that. Okay, over to you.
Number six, we wanted to add a dark skies pamphlet to the short-term rental application. And that was, so it would read, the STR does not cause significant impacts beyond the property's boundary, see Section nine point seven B. The good neighbor policy and the dark skies pamphlet are included in your application and shall be posted in your house rules.
Now, you have other pamphlets that are included.
Yes, we do. Under specific requirements, we would like no outdoor flames are allowed. Must be included in the house rules. Exceptions are allowed for underwriters' laboratories' UL-approved gas grills.
What about UL laboratories-approved pellet grills like a trailer?
Would that be an outdoor flame?
I mean, it's no different than a gas.
Yeah, it's a different fuel, it's gas, opposed to pill.
So. You could, UL-approved.
Gas or pellet?
Gas or pellet.
Fire.
What about smokers?
Yeah.
Well, trigger is a smoker.
They're either gas or they're a pellet.
I mean, the point of your case.
But they're not necessarily a grill.
Right, that's right.
Devices? I don't know. Grill or smoker? All right.
You can just put it in. There's smokers, there's, is there anything else we're missing? Pancake fryers.
Not an open flame either.
Yeah, they're all in the frying.
Yeah.
Well, a grill can be an open flame, but it's open.
Well, it sounds like open flame.
The meat flares up, it's gonna.
The fire restriction says open flame.
Can't, can't ban that, so how do you handle it? It's got security, why would?
I would say open flame and mention propane and natural gas. Fire.
UL-approved gas or pellet smokers or grills.
I mean, if they're, if you buy one that's approved and it flares up while you're cooking, that's just part of the process.
Yeah, because most of this is on campfires.
So, yeah. You're really trying to stop people from building a campfire on a property.
Or even a grill, I mean, a.
Fire pit.
A fire pit.
A fire pit, that's what I'm watching.
Even gas fire pits are a problem.
Open flame.
Yeah, open flame.
Fire pits.
Yeah. Because they're saying so.
Smoking.
So is it banning the gas-fired fire pits on a deck?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you all right with that?
On STRs.
It's only, this is just STRs.
It's a concealed flame, not an open flame.
So maybe it should say no outdoor open flames.
Correct.
I mean, so that.
Then you got some discretion there with who's finding them.
Dan?
Do we need a reference campfire or?
Well, that's clearly an outdoor flame or an open flame, regardless of the language.
That's right, it's just open flames is part of that.
I don't think that's a question. I, I think we're, and I started this, so I think we might be overthinking it a bit, but just saying approved gas or pellet grills or smokers, that, I think that means the special.
Maybe it's, I don't know, there are. You could nitpick an open flame in a fire, in a grill, has lava rocks in it, because it's not flaring up.
It's an out, but it's still an outdoor flame. And the, the word isn't open flame, the word here is outdoor flame.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Page seventy-nine, under BOCC shall, under number two, be just removed if denied in form of the applicant of the appeal process by the VCA, see Section four point three. So that is no longer applicable.
Okay.
Page eighty. Again, under E, we're removing an STR application not approved by the BOCC may be appealed to the VCA. See four point three, age appeals to the VCA. All right, nine, ten, seven, STR density, we would like to add there shall be no STR permitted within one-half mile of another STR except for areas historically used for tourism.
So is that line of sight or around the bend? How do you measure the half mile?
Draw a circle around it?
Is, well, I guess there's a couple of questions I have there. Number one, do we currently have STRs within, that would violate this provision?
Yes.
Yes.
But they, usually, they have been in tourism areas like Alpine. There may be some around the lake.
Do we have that defined, that historically used for tourism?
No, actually, that would probably be pretty subjective.
Well, I, I guess my, the reason I brought that up is because if we have STRs that are currently violating this provision, then we probably, in this place at least, need to make some mention that STRs approved prior to December eighth, twenty twenty-five are allowed, even if they violate.
Or just say after, instead of, you don't have to even say that, you just say these apply after.
Yeah, but my, yeah, my point is, we.
We, we may have some.
We, we need to.
I can think of one or two.
Well, I mean, I guess we don't need to. We're gonna probably run into litigation though.
But if, but if their application was put in, you know, their application was approved before this addition of the zoning resolution, they would operate under the zoning resolution that, at the time.
It, it's renewed in, in January, it's every year, they have to.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah. I, I don't necessarily agree with that, because it's not a, this is not like a special use permit situation. These things are renewed annually or however long they're renewed.
They're renewed, they're just making sure.
But their initial approval by the Board of County Commissioners was under an existing resolution, not this one.
So previously, if they're, unless they change owners, then I don't know if that's.
But the renewal, once they're renewed, they're renewed under this one. For instance, if you had someone that was approved in two thousand twenty-one, next year, they're not going to be able to have an open flame on their property. That, that applies to them, right? So why wouldn't this also apply to them?
I agree with you. So you would say as of whatever the, the date would be then? So applications as of?
I don't think you have to say it all, because it's.
I mean, you've got to say something about how they're grandfathered in.
Yeah.
With respect to this provision, not with respect to all the provisions. So we can't just get rid of someone's permit, because now they're within a half mile of another STR.
That's right.
So can you just add that in front of it, as of whatever the date's going to be? Applications.
STRs whose initial approval was prior to December eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay, that would work, because then, even though they're, so they'll get re-approved, because it was already initially approved. That's what's important.
So you put it at the end?
Yeah, at the end of the sentence.
Yeah.
STRs approved prior to, whose initial approval was prior to December eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Right. They could continue to exist.
Right. Are not subject to this restriction.
Right.
Okay, too fast.
Sorry. STRs whose initial approval was prior to December eighth, twenty twenty-five shall not be subject to this restriction.
I agree.
That works.
Perfect, thank you. All right, page one thirteen, under cease and desist order. We'd like to, with regards to the certified letter, we'd like to add that the county attorney and the director of Planning and Zoning Office acting as his own capacity as the county compliance inspector may issue a cease and desist order. So we're adding the county attorney.
Should that be and or or?
Should be or.
Yeah. And or.
She wants and.
So you want both of us to sign that letter?
The reason why I wanted to do it that way is so we weren't just constantly doing cease and desist orders, like this way, we're going through all the steps. And if we get to a cease and desist order, you're already involved.
Let me ask you, I understand what you're saying, but then, if she issues an order to the, it has the same standing as long as it's legally, as you, if you did.
Yeah, that's what it reads now, is that she issues that order.
Right.
What we're changing it to is where she and I sign on, on the same order.
We've done cease and desist orders before, and then we've had to have Dan.
Send it again?
Re, well, pull it out, because it wasn't done correctly, so.
Well, I want it done correctly, is it?
A team makes the dream work, so if they're working in, in connection, we should have less problems moving forward with individual.
In fact, that would be, your process should always be, before you issue a cease and desist, make sure it's written correctly legally, by, that's why we have anyone higher.
To be fair, we're not using this process right now. We're using a different process, where we go to the district or county court.
Yeah.
And simply because it's, and I'm fine with starting to use this process instead, but the process we use now puts the person in front of the judge, which is to have a little more weight and gravity to a letter from the county.
So do.
Well, it's still an order, it's a cease and desist order. It's not an order if a director signs it instead of a lawyer, what's the difference?
There, there's no difference from, from my perspective, but, but it, it sounds like the department would like to have me involved in that, which will.
Or you should be, because that'll be their process internally as a procedure to that office, to me.
Well, it's too late.
It doesn't matter if it's said here, yeah.
Should we go to what we currently are doing, that's not written, and formalize that process?
That's what I think.
Because what has happened in the past is our planning and zoning department does something. We wait thirty days, then they do something again, then they wait thirty days. We continue to waste taxpayer dollars. Let's get them into court, let's get this thing.
So your procedure out of that first thirty days, boom, send an order or whatever.
So we, we try to work with them for that first thirty days, have them come into the office and make a plan.
And if they don't, then you issue a real letter.
Then we get ahold of Dan and say, okay, they're not complying.
And then I've sent one last letter from the county attorney's office saying, either do this, or we're going to have to go to the next level.
That's, that's fine. But it's, or is an order, it's still an order. That works, it just tells you what we're going to do if you don't obey that order. You're taking it to court.
Yeah, but that's a, again, that's a different process than what we're offering. We can do it that, we're authorized to do it that way, under the way the laws of the state work. This is a separate process, we have the option to use if we want to, that doesn't require court involvement. It allows the office to go out there and put warning tape up, you know.
Well, that would be like Lucas said, that's an internal process the zoning office can adopt.
The wait and the enforcement that our planning and zoning department doesn't have, this, this is what's forced us to do what we're doing now currently, which seems to be getting ten times better results than what we had been doing before.
Because it gets it to the court.
Because it gets it to the court faster. We, we are serious, we are, I mean, we've got volunteers that put a plan together, and the plan is for this community, we've got to back that up with our court system.
We're skipping, you know, skipping paragraph twelve. Paragraph twelve is basically a notification signed by the director, and this brings it to full circle after that first thirty days, correct? And that's when we go, get it activated, so yes, I, I agree, it should be.
Leave as is?
I think leave as you have.
The county attorney and the director. Hold on a second. Go ahead, you got a comment? Okay, so upfront, we're good with, well, it's upfront with this. Is that what we're saying? Okay. Okay, don't. Let's see if it works any better.
All right, moving on. Page one thirty nine.
One thirty nine.
Compliance inspection, we, we talked about this earlier. To, what we'd like to do under septic, on the procedure of closing it out, is to add the number of potential bedrooms and plans that shall be confirmed to verify sizing of the leach field and septic tank. And the reason she did that is if somebody builds a basement and it's unfinished, then she would perhaps take that into an account and.
So how do you determine, because if a basement, you could say, I'm gonna put two bedrooms in there.
Well, so according to the new, according to the new state out of regulation, they are doing it now in the new state regulations that in unfinished basement, we need to permit that new septic system as.
Need one more bedroom.
If they have twelve hundred square feet down there, there's the potential that there's going to be bedrooms down there. So we need to, if, if they're doing three bedrooms upstairs, they need to have a whole bedroom septic. They can't come in and say, I'm permitting mine upstairs, but not anywhere downstairs.
Or what if they don't call a bedroom and they put a toilet down there? It's a rec room. Is that still?
But then their plans need to be in open.
Well, it would be open, but it could include one bathroom just for a.
Well, they can have a bathroom, we don't want a bathroom.
That's my point.
But the state is saying that if they come in and they're doing a basement, we have to make that system where there's another bathroom or another bedroom with a system. Because people are doing unfinished basements and then they're going in tagging these bedrooms, then they're putting it on the market for five bedroom.
Yeah, I get that, but it, uh, it, it penalizes a guy that, I don't want a bedroom down, I want a big rec room with cool tables, and I want a bathroom. Are we gonna allow that? How, how do you change?
You can do that either.
Can you make that upfront if they make that statement? How are you gonna get around it? Because the bathroom's okay to add.
Should it be an office?
Any, any, there's gotta be something to be judgmental of.
It's gotta be a judgment.
Exotic office as to what?
Right.
Is realistic and what is, where, where someone.
Now, if, if it's sold and a new owner decides to put a, make it a bedroom, that'd be a different story. It could still pop up as a bedroom, but you.
If revised plan.
You still got a bathroom.
It just adds a sensitivity so she has.
Got some discretion, gotta have some discretion, can't.
Just adding that.
As long as we're upfront with people who come here and go, hey, if, if your basement's gonna be over twelve hundred square feet, we're gonna count that as a bedroom on your septic. We don't, they don't get building, and then, oh, by the way, we're gonna consider that a bedroom. That I don't wanna do. I don't want our subjectivism to come in after the fact, after they start building, but before.
If you do it before and you, and at closeout, you, you have signatures that says, this is for a three bedroom and a bathroom and a rec room. You know, make the statements so they know what it was sold as. Or what it was permitted at to the owner. Then in the future, I mean, people could cut a room up anytime they want, but they, but they gotta get a permit to make that modification if it's over a hundred square feet or whatever it is.
Do they? If somebody finishes their basement, do they have to get a permit?
No, that's, that's my problem.
Now, we don't know. When people do, when people go in and they finish out a basement, they don't have to permit that because.
Right. Doesn't change the square foot.
Doesn't change the square footage, so we have no idea that they just added two bedrooms to the basement.
That's why I think it, I think even, even if they don't put a bedroom in, it's a rec room with a bathroom, are we gonna charge them for a bedroom?
We just, we just don't want to have a conflict between them.
Right.
The outs regulations.
The real impact would be size of septic tank. In, in order to get that other bedroom, you gotta have a different sized septic tank if you exceed three bedrooms or something.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they need electrical plumbing if they're gonna put anything additional down there except?
We don't, I mean, if they do that, they do it through the state.
Right, as I say.
So, well, yeah, and so.
We won't know until it's sold.
Right.
It's on the market and they're selling it for five bedroom.
And, and the landlord, I mean, it's easy to sell a person on another two hundred gallons because it costs five hundred dollars on a tank. It's not much. A little more will, will aid with putting it in.
But the point is this puts us consistent with the state regulations.
And if you threw the potential upfront like you wanted.
Those, and that's what you would describe in your, in your application.
Says potential.
Right, so, and then there's.
Add that one word.
If I were a guy buying or building a house, I'd say, I don't know what I'm gonna do, but I better plan for the future, I'll buy, buy a bigger tank. Okay.
And then as discussed before, just removing appendix H, which is the common acronyms. Miss Kay.
Well, you did a lot of hard work, it's good, it makes it better.
No, I thought, yeah. Thank you for all the work.
Well, I'm just in time for you to start the next segment. For the wild land.
The woo wee toads?
Yeah.
And if we get, how do we handle the bunkhouse words? We don't call them bunkhouses, it's a structure with toilet in it, whatever.
It's either you've got a guest house or you have an accessory building.
Right.
There is no bunkhouse.
Right, that's right, we're gonna call them bunkhouses.
No, no more bunkhouse.
That's right. But you can have an accessory, you can have an accessory building.
Yes, you can.
So if you have any problem, just find, just finding that with people so they understand what they got.
No, because the permit says uninhabitable.
Yeah, and so the re, and the, uh, realtors are all good with that now, huh? Well, they were.
No, what they will be eventually.
Well, they said that initially, they, they're good with, as long as they, people buy a piece of property and they have another, they wanna have a guest house. And that's a structure, an accessory structure that gets you completely. Bathroom.
But that's like, if you can't sleep in that.
Right, or, or you make it, you can.
An accessory structure with a bathroom?
Sure.
You just can't cook.
But that's a bunkhouse, we need to go.
Right, there is no bunkhouse. The accessory building or it's either human habitation or not.
Okay. All right, any other questions? No? Anything, um, here, questions here? Jim, you got a question?
Oh, I have one. Oh, they're, they're real quick, just sort of clarification because if I'm confused about it, then everybody, you know.
Let's hear it.
So I'll just start from my personal notice. You define a bedroom as a room for sleeping? I think, so what you said?
Any room intended for sleeping.
Intended.
Intended.
So if you put a bed in a space not intended for sleeping, that's not a bedroom? The reason I'm asking is I know, know about this, and there was a big bruhaha about how big the septic had to be because was this a bedroom or not? And the, the definition does not match with my experience of definition from real estate, which is a bedroom has to have a closet. So this is bedrooms and septic regulations versus beds and septics, it sounds like? Anyway, that was my concern about confusing there, but if you're comfortable.
Think the state has that in it then.
And then, real quick, breach way, does it have to have walls?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's just a cover space?
Connected to.
To, to a building, so like Rajan House.
Breeze won't go through it if it has walls.
Sure, well, if you have.
Open the window.
Uh, okay, um, real quick question.
Hold, hold on a second. Hold on a minute.
Under the definition of bedroom, we say any room intended for sleeping. Should we say any space intended for sleeping? No.
No.
Okay. All right, no.
You could throw a bunch of ratchets around.
Okay.
I tried.
I'm just worried about, uh, the arguments that people from New Jersey.
Heck, yeah.
The landlord will handle them easily.
And then a real quick question about the corners, how many members in the planning and zoning commission?
Seven.
There's seven members and a corner and five?
Yes. And we have alternates as well.
The reason for that is so you get the diversity of opinion and make sure you make the best decision possible, the way I read it. You can't deal with three guys showing up.
Well, and also you can't get anything done.
Get to.
Everybody, you'd be there all the time.
Yes.
Um, anyway, okay. There's alliances, all structures must comply with state regulations.
Yes, and that's so, that's plumbing, electric.
Until the state changes.
Right.
And then the county has to have building codes.
Well, we, the state codes are there.
If state requires the county to have building codes, that's a whole different conversation.
Yeah.
And we will have a monthly board.
Uh, regarding green burial, does that have to be disclosed to, uh, a potential liar?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why we have the G P S coordinates.
And that's why it's recorded.
Oh, there you go. That's how it would be disclosed, just. I don't recall whether there is, I don't recall any standard Colorado, um, property, real estate property disclosure, whether that's a line item or not.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
But if it's recorded, it, it will show up.
There, you could find it.
It'll show up in the title work if it's reported.
Okay. Um, because, you know, ghosts. Uh, question about S T R density, is the half mile from the structure or from the property line?
The one that actually be from.
From the structure.
From the structure, not the property line, because we don't know how big the properties.
Right.
If they're gonna be less than a half a mile, we're probably looking at Alpine area where, I mean, those are looking at what acre, acre and a half lots? So they could be easily greater than a half a mile.
Thank you.
I'm worried more about big properties and having to be half a mile from the property line. Then you have to have a property between the properties.
No, this is between structures.
Maybe, well.
So you could, but you could have neighbors that were.
Between, between your S T R and off your property.
Right. That's right.
Uh, that's it.
Good.
Do you think we need to specify that under the density that is property now?
Well. The occupant dwelling.
Ask him your question.
The more specific, the, the less ambiguities.
Right.
I think he's got a good point. I think we need to specify that.
And now we just specify.
That's a good question.
Uh, what, and I, I don't have the, the language in front of me anymore.
I, I do. On the bottom.
Well.
Well, I mean.
The occupant dwelling.
So you.
So you could, but you could have neighbors that were.
Between, between your S T R and off your property.
Right. That's right.
Uh, that's it.
Good.
Do you think we need to specify that under the density that is property now?
Well.
Well, with you.
The occupant dwelling.
I'm asking your question.
The more specific, the, the less ambiguities.
Right.
I think he's got a good point. I think we need to specify that.
And now we just specify.
That's a good question.
Uh, what, and I, I don't have the, the language in front of me anymore.
I, I do. On the bottom. I'm asking your question.
The more specific, the, the less ambiguities.
Right.
I think he's got a good point. I think we need to specify that.
And now we just specify.
That's a good question.
Uh, what, and I, I don't have the, the language in front of me anymore.
I, I do. On the bottom.
Yeah, that's gonna have to require a whole rewriting of that sentence if you want to change it. Um, because.
You'd have to get into the size of lots, and if a lot's less than a.
I mean, I, I guess you could say that there should be no S T R permitted where the structure of the S T R is within one half mile of another structure in a different S T R.
So you were just in the S T R structure?
I mean, that, that, that sounds like that's what.
That's what it is.
Or how the board is interpreting it.
So.
I, I don't know that you need to change it because if a court's interpreting it, a court's gonna interpret it against, in a way that allows for more S T Rs, not less S T Rs.
Okay, and that's applying that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think that a court would.
Good.
Structure.
Yeah. That's very smart.
Court would go structure destruction instead of property line, property line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a court would.
Oh, you're, you're right.
So the court would, would, I, I didn't understand that.
The court would interpret the ambiguity against the county and not against the property.
Oh, against the county, so they would say it's not property line.
Right.
Right.
Because if it's property line, you can't have S T Rs neighboring each other.
Right.
Right.
That would be impossible then, to get any S T Rs. S T Rs would go away.
Yeah, and obviously they can't guarantee what you're talking about.
And I could just put structure after S T R?
Yeah, but I, I don't think that fixes the problem.
Okay.
Short term rules are defined by.
We may want to, next year, put in there no two S T Rs side by side, property line wise. If we see it as a.
But if you have a forty acre property in the west side, the forty acre property is on the east side. It's a miles apart.
You gotta be silly. You gotta be able, you know, this, this America still, you gotta have the ability to use your property.
There would have to be some subjectivity to it, you know, some common sense to what your half mile is.
That's right. We've had, uh, people.
I don't see the planning commissioner looking at, you know, at the property line.
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, it's all dependent how the office interprets it, and I don't care that we must say it should be interpreted differently. So as long as her office is interpreting.
This would dominate to deal with, with small, with S T Rs on small lots.
Right.
Makes sense.
Well, and the other problem we have is, you can't, you gotta draw a limit somewhere because some places you have mountains up here, and you can still hear these guys talking back and forth, and they're a mile apart. So what, you know? Yeah. Depends on how big the band is you get.
We could've gone two miles, you know?
We could, we could get real specific.
Yeah.
You only have one S T R in this county.
Yeah.
And that's mine.
It's mine. No, I don't have any. All right, what else we got? Questions? Okay, let's move forward. So we've got the amendments, we understand them. Next up is Resolution twenty five fifty adopting the zoning resolution amendments as read. Want to read it, Lucas?
So Custer County Resolution, Resolution number twenty five dash fifty, a resolution modifying portions of the Custer County zoning resolution. Whereas the Custer County Planning Commission has formally recommended to the Board of County Commissioners. Whereas the Custer County Planning Commission has formally recommended to the Board of County Commissioners, B O C C, that the current zoning resolution dated March sixth, twenty twenty four, be modified with respect to various provisions. And whereas these recommendations have been made by the Planning Commission, has determined that it is necessary to further refine and adjust the zoning resolution. And whereas this board concurs with the reasoning of the Planning Commission and expressly finds that the proposed changes to the zoning resolution would serve to promote the health, safety and general welfare of the citizens of and visitors to Custer County. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, Colorado, that one, the provisions of the zoning resolution are hereby amended as set forth in the attached amendments, as if such amendments were fully restated herein. Two, the Custer County Office of Planning and Zoning shall adjust the zoning resolution available to the public to reflect the attached amendments and shall republish the same with such amendments. The effective date hereof shall be the date of the adoption of this resolution, approved and adopted this eighth day of December twenty fifth at West Cliff, Colorado. I'll make a motion to approve Custer County Resolution twenty five dash fifty.
Oh, second motion.
Okay, they moved and seconded, seconded to approve and adopt the Resolution twenty five fifty as read. Uh, any other discussion on that today? Jim?
One more. Um, I heard it mentioned that the decisions of B O C C are not appealable?
They're not appealable administratively. They would be appealable to the district court.
Okay.
Just as any other decision of the board.
Okay.
Sounds like you just passed a brief meeting.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for that vote. All in favor of adopting Resolution twenty five fifty, say aye. Paul?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Kanda, aye. Okay, good. You got the official resolution?
I did, yes. And I have a question for Dan and maybe for Doina. In the past, the board has also signed an enacting. Nat, nat?
Enacting.
Clause?
Yes.
That goes in the front of the zoning resolution. Do you have a copy of that? Like a holder?
Yes.
Does.
Yeah, it's on.
A reminder.
And we record that with the zoning resolution.
Makes it official.
So does that need to be done?
That's, I mean, uh, I think the resolution takes, it does that, but if you wanna prepare that or someone wants to prepare that, have the committee board sign.
It just puts it.
We can just sign this later, but that's.
Just puts it.
I guess we just have always done it and so I get no.
Yeah, we should do it because it puts some meat on the resolution.
Or just puts all the legal.
Record on it. Okay, any other questions? Okay. You good? You good? Okay, hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting at what time is it?
Ten forty one.
Ten forty one.
That's not, that's not a crisis.
Thanks.